I'd like to welcome everyone to our special call meeting of Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, of the Swan County Board of County Commissioners, approximately 5:00 PM. At this time, if we please stand, we'll have Commissioner Hale, he's going to do our invocation and our pledge.
Bow your heads, please. Lord, we thank you for this day, thank you for the opportunity to come together, come together as a group of Swan County to do what's right for our community. Lord, we pray for your forgiveness, we pray for your watchful hand and eye over every move we make. Lord, there's a lot of people out here, we don't know what they're going through, I pray for this every day, that you'll lift them up and you'll help them the same way you helped me and my family every day. I want to say a special prayer for one of my employees, Wayne Culpepper, he lost his wife and his son in a matter of four weeks to COVID, and I just want you to keep in his prayers, and I ask everybody to pray for him as well. All this in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
My pledge would be to testify that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, gentlemen, and first on my business this evening is the approval of a renewal of a resolution declaring local state of emergency due to COVID-19 dated March 17, 2020. I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, off the motion crew.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fleming?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have a time specific at 5:05 PM, which is just a couple of minutes away, we'll wait just a couple of minutes here for anyone else that it was advertised, so we have to give everyone an opportunity to be here. All right, it's approximately 5:05 PM. At 5:05 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, continuance of a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving special permit, SP 21-03-01, by Charley Holdings LLC Authorized Agents, for the Hatch Trust and for special permit for utilities and related facilities on properties on Agricultural One. Is Mr. Meeks here? Okay. I'm going to include all these numbers under that one opening, go to SP 21-03-02 will be included, also SP-21-03-03 and SP 21-03-04. At this time, we will open the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to County Attorney, Mr. Pravat. If we have anyone wishing to speak today or possibly may speak, Mr. Pravat will swear you in at this time.
All right, I know some of you testified at the last hearing, and you were under oath at that time, and you would continue to be under oath as you proceed here today. Anyone else that is appearing today, and you think you may offer testimony to the board today, would you please stand to be sworn? Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody else in the audience, everybody that is here is still under oath continuing from the previous hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. At this time, Mr. Meeks, do you have anything you need to open with?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to add, other than to just remind the board, as you had previously mentioned, that you'd be taking action on all of the special permits in one approval or denial, as well as considering the conditions that have been brought up by the applicant, that if the board so chooses to adopt those, changes to the conditions of the resolution, that they would be noted and be included in part of the resolution adoption.
Thank you, sir. At this time, the applicant, you have any opening comments you wish to make?
Yeah, I'll just say briefly, thanks to all of you for getting this accelerated here.
Hey, excuse me, just one moment.
Yep.
If you would, please.
Write your name and address.
Sorry. Yeah, Landon Abernathy, Director of Development.
I left it out, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Landon Abernathy, Director of Development at Birdseye, live at 2850 Virginia Avenue, Charlotte, North Carolina. Yeah, so thanks to all of you for getting us bumped up in your schedule here, we really do appreciate it. I'm happy to, you know, fire up the laptop and go back into the details here, I know we spent a good amount of time on this last week, but I'll defer to you, we're here to answer any questions as you deliberate, yeah, however you guys want to run it, it's fine with us.
Okay, I mean, I don't really have anything on the computer that I need to see, I would like to just have a little bit of discussion on the outlines in red here, that is what you're proposing that we do, that we change for what we was requesting.
Yeah, great.
I would just like to be clear with the board, that everyone on the board is fine with that, that's why I asked to open to page 2 of 5 there, is basically anything on the right-hand side, that's what we're agreeing to, so if we pass this, it would be agreeing to those things. I think, first I want to say, I appreciate the board in giving me some time to be able to go look at it, I was able to do a site visit, I was able to do it extremely quick, so I got there on Tuesday, the rest of the board had the opportunity, I appreciate that, and then was able to push it up and get you back in here, and obviously, we've got other things, hearings coming too, so I thought it was a great location, I mean, the site visit does a lot for you versus looking at it on paper. The biggest thing, question I got is, I just want, not really question, I just, the comment I have, I just want to be sure about the plannings and them surviving. Commissioner Hale, I think he reached out and had some comments he'd like to make.
Yep, I was going to say, before we get into all of that, that was some of the, and I know I'm a stickler on this, so please forgive me, and it's not your fault, but when I first got on the board, we did a solar project, we'd never done one before, and we totally missed the boat on buffering and things of that nature.
Understood.
It's unfortunate, but it is what happened, and we've tried to better that and be proactive on that, so that's why I always get into the buffering side of it, and I'm going to lean on you, Commissioner White, on some of the things that I did call Ms. Carolyn Saft and talked to her, which I want to say, kind of agree with what the chairman said, I appreciate the time to go and look, I was out of town that weekend prior to that meeting, want to thank Mr. Norris for taking me out there and spending a whole afternoon with me, and I will say this, I want to thank you guys, because, I can't remember what you were saying, Mr. Chairman, when you see it, and you can actually lay your eyes on how far the setbacks are, and really, the effort that went into this, my goal's always been, I don't want anybody to know there's a solar farm there unless they want to know there's a solar farm there, and I think you guys have tried to do that, so. But I had five questions that I had asked Ms. Saft, and I want you to hear these, and if you agree or disagree, or if anybody has any comments on it, but on the vegetation, the plants, I was asking her about the life expectancy of it, because I know that's, I don't know how long you guys are going to be there, 25 years, something?
Forty, forty years.
Forty years, okay.
Yep.
So, she told me, she must have knew that, because she said, "I'm not going to tell you they're going to live as long as they're going to be there," so she did say that, but with that being said, she said that what happens in the meantime is other vegetation, nature takes over, things grow and fill in, and I guess there was one type of a plant that was being planted that I guess every year dies back, but when it grows back, it grows back more, shrinks off, I guess is the word she used, so that was reassuring. One of the other questions I did ask her was, the time of year that we're planting, or you guys will be planting, you never know around here, we may have droughts, or we may have, like we did in June, 21 inches fall in two days.
Yep.
You know, would these plants live through something like that, you know, being that they're adolescent plants, I guess, young plants, if you will? Of course, I agree with what she said, she couldn't attest to that one way or another, but she said they would need some type of watering, if you will, whether it be irrigation in the ground, or just a water truck going by from time to time, things like that, which also fell in with another question, and I think I'd ask you guys about it, about the buffering, I don't know if you've been around here during the summertime, I think a lot of you guys have, anything within 10 feet of the rideaways turn white, being on a lime rock road or something like that, and I just want to make sure that they were tough enough and resilient enough to withstand that in their younger years, and she had a saying, forgive me, I wanted to write it down, but like, the first three years is pretty detrimental to these things.
I love this saying.
Yeah.
First year it sleeps, second year it creeps, third year it leaps.
That's it, that's what she said.
That's Carolyn Saft's special.
Yeah, I thought that was great, and she said it so fast, I couldn't write it down, but another thing I was asking, because I have this problem at my house, and I'm sure a lot of us do, about any kind of worms or infections, if they would be, you know, if that would be a problem, she said no more than normal of anything around here, but she didn't foresee that being a problem. And then my last question was, and I think this was more towards you, would be proposed towards you guys and her, but who's going to monitor how they're growing, if there's any dead spots, and can we get those filled in over time? You know, I know you guys, I think at some point in time, come in, do your job, and then someone else takes over, and just wanted to address that, and that's really all I had, so.
Great, yes, so on the maintenance piece, the buffering would be wrapped in in our, you know, typical grounds maintenance, so, you know, we'll have grass sown under all of the modules as well, you know, two to three maintenance personnel out there per day, really averaged across the year, so that's how that'll get monitored. You made reference to a watering truck, and that's one that Ms. Saft mentioned to me, also, some of the local native nurseries that we've spoken with have just suggested that, you know, as long as we're going in in late fall, sorry, early fall for planting, that's the best time of year when we've got some moisture in the atmosphere to get everything established, but then if we roll into a prolonged drought, you know, after that, in that first growing season, we're going to need to get a water truck out there, you know, probably somewhere once a week, once every week and a half, these native species don't really like a constant water, they like a deep, more sporadic watering, so once a week gets them what they need, but again, you know, that's on an as-needed basis, and the idea there is, you know, that would really only be required in a long, prolonged drought situation, which could happen, but yeah, things are easily mitigated against.
But you guys have, like you say, someone is going to be monitoring that and reporting back.
That's right, yep, yep.
Good. And I don't have a problem, I know you, I think you had mentioned it, and she did too, when I was talking with her, about these things, getting that certain height, that certain amount of time, maybe these won't do that, because they're more of a native, like you're saying.
Yep.
And once she explained that to me in detail, that makes perfect sense to me, too, so.
Great.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fleming?
I, on last week, I wasn't dialed in anything, but I just didn't have the time, the timing just wasn't, we was trying to rush to get Tallahassee to the legislative conference, and I wanted to have this to come back, so that I can get more understanding, I wanted to look at the project, lo and behold, I did get the opportunity to drive down and look at the property, it's well off the road, it's hidden pretty good, and I did have the opportunity to talk to one of the neighbors out there, and he, I just want to get a vibe, a feeling from him, and he was, he was energetic, he told me he'd been living there a couple of years, and his wife, I think she came to the hearing, I don't know, she's not here tonight, but he said she was at the last hearing, and they were very pleased with it, and they wanted to have something of that nature in that community, and it moved the old debris, and then, I mean, it's a shiny object out there, but still, apparently it's kind of exciting to people that never been around it, you know, but I feel excited about it, I know somewhat about the hatches, I went and spoke with them, introduced myself to them before the meeting got started, so I'm excited, and you know, with this, as we get on into the discussion, I may have some more questions.
Great.
This is just a comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner White?
On the species that's on the list here, are they planting all these species, or is she just going to pick some from this list, or?
Yes, so what we've got on the list here is really representative, and what I would point you towards is, in the letter from Ms. Saft, she's actually got a matrix on the backside of that letter, that's got some, I don't know, 25 species that she selected for us.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, and the idea there is that we're just driving as much diversity as we possibly can into that. Back to your point about predation, you know, the more diversity you can get in there, the less susceptible you are to those individual predators that could be a problem. Yeah, so, you know, based on what we're able to access with local growers, you know, what we can get in sufficient quantities, so it'll all come out of that list that Ms. Saft put together.
Well, the only, I'm sure you're getting a contractor to do that.
Yep.
To do the plannings.
Yeah, that'd be bid out.
I mean, I'd just like to see a water truck there when they're planting them, so they can wash them in and get air pockets from around the roots.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's going to help you and help us, too, so.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yep, and that.
Other than that, I mean, I like this, I like what she's got, as far as the species go, I mean, it's great, and I do own a nursery, so I do have some experience in it, but, I mean, it's, she's got a good list there, so it's all doable.
All right.
Mr. Lamb, we're waiting on you.
Well, I was just going to ask Commissioner White if he could pronounce all of those scientific names for me.
Sure I can.
And I agree, sir, that's why I called the experts.
I mean, he owns a nursery, I expected him to, you know, state exactly.
I'd get paid extra for that, that's expert testimony.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would just echo what you guys have said, I'm pretty confident and feel good about the project, have been from the start, familiar with the area, and there are smarter people than me in this room, and I'm going to take their advice and go with it, but it, you know, looks like a good fit.
Thank you, sir. I guess my question would be, and I don't know if I've not, if I've overlooked it or not read it clearly here, when it comes to the plannings, is there a warranty time period?
Yeah, and there likely will be, but I can't, you know, commit where we stand today without having contracted, you know, who's actually going to plant.
I'm not as, I'm concerned about being able to see through the buffer and not see through it, but I'm more concerned about the survival rate of what's planted there. If it doesn't meet a tight measure by year three, that doesn't concern me as much as it's living.
Yep.
So, I think that's my biggest thing is, you know, and I'm not saying that 100% of them have to be, have to live, and you have to go back and check them every week, I'm saying, you know, we need somewhere, whatever survival rate we should be at. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, just for clarification there, even after the planting, you know, is done, and we've moved on down the road right here, they still have to maintain that opacity requirement, so if something dies out, and an area gets blanked out for, you know, whatever reason, they could be cited for that and have to come back in and fulfill the requirement.
So that would be the company that has it at that time?
Whoever would be owning the land at that period of time.
I got you. That's, that kind of clears it up for me, then.
Gentlemen, if I might have one more thing to say while I've got a microphone in my face, talking about the watering and the requirements there that are actually under item number 13 of the comments, it's on page three of five, I just, thinking about language, you know, it says, "Native species used for buffering will not require irrigation infrastructure." You may want to add something in there, that installed irrigation is not going to be required for the native species, but shall, the native species shall be watered periodically to maintain the growth and the buffering requirement, so that you have a little bit more maintenance, you know, issue in there to make sure that it is fulfilled, and would satisfy what you're concerned with, Commissioner Stapleton.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be open to any suggestions that the applicant may have, I, I'm like Commissioner Hale, and I think what he was speaking of was in my district, so.
It was.
That's where the buffering comes from, it's, so it's close to my heart, and I, you know, I just want to leave there and make sure we've done everything the best we can. I feel confident this evening, I mean, just from the discussion, that we're going to get where we need to be this evening, I just, if we've got some minor details here, I'd like to get those ironed out, if there's something that you're willing to do to try to help us with this.
Yeah, no, I'm not opposed to that, I might, you know, steer it towards water available on-site for irrigation as needed, something along those lines, I don't want to commit to, you know, running a water truck if there's no need for a water truck, but, you know, yeah, we're happy to add some language in there, that, and the intent with removing that is, you know, we are committing to having water available at the site for dust control, which would look the exact same as, you know, what we would be using to fill our water truck for irrigation, so, you know, as long as we're not committing to running a truck when it's not necessary, if we get some as-needed language in there, we're happy to do that.
That's what I was just trying to roll it into the same paragraph.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I would agree with you guys, that, I mean, this is North Florida, and I'm pretty familiar with planting plants, too, I planted a blue million of them unpaid for a relative of mine, but at any rate, you're not going to get away from watering them in, I mean, you're just not going to get away from that, that's, if you do, if you don't water them in, they're going to die.
Yep.
And I think that that's what this, the board's trying to say, is, we don't want you to go out there and plant a bunch of shrubs, and it's hard for me to speak into the microphone, look at you two, you plant a bunch of shrubs and they die in three months, and, you know, so if we can alleviate that concern of watering them in, or maybe put some language in there that Mr. Pravat could come up with, to say, hey, you know, water the plants the first 60 or 90 days after being installed, to guarantee a 95% survival rate or something, and if that's not achieved, then you guys, or whoever the owner is, comes back, just so you don't throw a bunch of plants in the ground, and 50% of them die because they didn't get watered in and maintained until those roots can gain some traction. I think that's.
I agree with that.
I think that's what everybody's trying to say.
Right, exactly, and I mean, you keep it, keep the moisture there for, you know, 90 days or so, I mean, then you're going to be good.
Is that right, Mr. White?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, that's what I was asking him earlier about watering them in when they're planting them, but you're going to have to water them, you know, for at least 60 days after that, periodically, if it's not raining, but as needed, they're going.
Yep, yep, and that's the intent here anyway, so if we need to firm that up in language.
I mean, it's just going to save you money, if you've got to go back.
Yeah, I don't want to plan it again.
It's coming out of your pocket, so.
Be cheaper to water them and to buy them again and replant them.
For sure.
We want you to be successful with what you're doing, and we don't want to get in an argument about plants being dead, and, you know, need them be replaced, I mean, that's all we're trying to.
I don't want it to look like my house.
No, that's fair, and I want to come back and work in North Florida and point back at this farm, so, yeah, we're all aligned.
But they still have to meet that requirement on the, over so many years, the screen on it at 80%, so, I mean, at some point, if they are dead, they're going to have to replace them.
Yeah, I mean, that'll just continue on, basically.
Yeah.
For the lifetime of the contract, basically, as far as the farm's there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, that part kind of takes care of itself, we're just trying to help initiate the survival rate when you first start, I mean, most everybody, everyone in this room understands, we've got some sandy soil around here, especially when it's in the hot months. Gentlemen, you have any other questions for this gentleman?
Chairman, I don't.
Did you have anyone else from your organization that wished to speak, or have anything to add to it?
I don't, no.
Okay.
I think we're good.
That's fine, so I think we're good at this time, I'm going to, do I have any other comments from the board, I got to open the Florida public comment in just a second, but I didn't know if anyone had any comment they wanted to make.
I'm not clear, do we want to add some language to that item 13?
I think that's where, I think that's what he's asking at this point, so, yeah, I think so.
I'll read again what I just said, just kind of in a general sense, it says, "Installed irrigation will not be required to irrigate the native species, but irrigation, but the native species shall be watered periodically to maintain the growth and the buffering requirements." That way, it puts the onus on them to be able, you know, to be able to do it.
I'm satisfied with that.
Yes, sir.
You gentlemen, okay?
Good.
At this time, I will open the Florida public comment, do I have anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment. At this time, I will ask for a motion to adopt this resolution, but I would ask if you offer that motion, that you would probably want to let Mr. Pravat help you clarify what that motion will be and where it will be in the manner, so.
I would suspect that you'd want to make a motion to approve the special permits, zero, yeah, as listed, the four special permits, but each of the special permits done together would have one set of conditions that would apply, this set of conditions are, have been attached as exhibit, well, as part of exhibit number two, and then to make the slight change for additional language in paragraph 13. And Eric, on the record, beside the record, I'll clarify for all of that, to get it straightened out.
Okay.
But that would be the general motion.
Gentlemen, at this time, I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve all four special permit applications with the, with the added verbiage in item 13, requiring the water as needed per Mr. Pravat. Is that all you need?
Is that satisfactory, Mr. Pravat?
Just please say that you add all the conditions, and then with the addition to 13.
And to add all the conditions for all four permits, with the conditions on item 13.
Thank you.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner White, I have a second by Commissioner Lamb, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five, oh, gentlemen. At this time, we will close public hearing. At this time, I will open the floor to any public comment about any other items that need to be heard this evening. Seeing none, I will close public comment. This time, we'll go into closing comments, Mr. Pravat, you have anything additional?
No, sir, not today, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner White?
I would just like to thank the hatches and their people for being able to come back, and glad we could get it done for you, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Lamb?
No, sir, I'm good tonight.
Mr. Fleming?
I just want to echo what Commissioner White said about thanking them for coming back, letting me know that you're for real, that you want to, have the desire to serve this community, this county, and do what's best for the county and for the people of Swan County, thank you.
Commissioner Hale?
Just kind of echo the same thing, I just want to say thank you to you guys, I mean, when I went out there and looked at the property, and thank you, Mr. Norris, for taking me, I know I thanked you already, but I know you guys really put some thought into it to help us with buffering and issues, obviously, you've heard that we've had in the past, and I just appreciate that, it makes our job a little easier, and things like that happen, so, thank you, absolutely.
I would just echo the sentiments of the board, I, you know, obviously, I was the one that spoke up and asked for some additional time, and I appreciate the hatches for allowing us to have that time. It's real important at times, well, all the time, because what will happen is, you can vote on something, and before you can get to your house, you'll get a phone call, and that resident will say, "Did you do a site visit?" And you got to.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Lamb?
No, sir. I'm good tonight.
Mr. Fleming?
I just want to echo what Commissioner White said about thanking them for coming back, letting me know that you're for real, that you want to, have the desire to serve this community, this county, and do what's best for the county and for the people of this county. Thank you.
Commissioner Hale?
Just kind of echo the same thing. I just want to say thank you to you guys. I mean, when I went out there and looked at the property, and thank you, Mr. Norris, for taking me. I know I thanked you already, but I know you guys really put some thought into it to help us with buffering and issues, obviously, you've heard that we've had in the past, and I just appreciate that. It makes our job a little easier, and things ought to happen, so thank you, absolutely. That's all.
I would just echo the sentiments of the board. I, you know, obviously, I was the one that spoke up and asked for some additional time, and I appreciate the hatches for allowing us to have that time. It's real important at times, well, all the time, because what will happen is, you can vote on something, and before you can get to your house, you'll get a phone call, and that resident will say, "Did you do a site visit?" And you got to tell that person yes or no, and I like to be able to tell them yes. So, but anyway, I appreciate your efforts. Once, when I went out there and looked at it, I mean, it's a good plan, it's a good fit for where it's at, and it'll be an asset to the community. So, thank you, gentlemen, for all your hard work. This time, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lamb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.